Good afternoon, and welcome to the January 16th Order City Council Work Session. We're going to start this meeting with presentations. The new notes for the police officers, we can have that. Chief Paul, please go forward to introduce the officers and their families.
Good afternoon, everybody. First of all, I'd like to invite the six newly recruited officers being escorted today to come up front and take video of the chief soon. Paul, great to meet you. Can you see some video? Can you hear anybody's second? Again, good afternoon. I'm Deputy Chief Michael Wallach. It's my pleasure to introduce to you the six members of our latest Police Department recruit class being escorted today. First, we have Zachary Seer. Zach graduated from the University of Connecticut and served as a police officer for five years for the Newington Police Department. Next, we have Keon Evans. Keon is a graduate of Boca Sea High School and served in the United States Army. Next, we have Justin Fritz. Justin graduated from Colorado State University and served as a police officer for five years in Portland, Maine. Next, we have Bethany Din. Bethany graduated from the University of South Florida and served as a police aide with the Clearwater Police Department for the past three years. Next, we have Noah Starcheski. He graduated with his bachelor's degree from St. Peter's College and served as a police aide with the Clearwater Police Department for the past four years. Finally, we have Maria Telus. Maria graduated from the University of Rhode Island and served as a police officer in both West Haven Police Department and Newington Police Department of Connecticut. Welcome.
Raise your hands. I state your name.
I am Alexis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of Government.
The Constitution of Government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
In the Charter and Laws.
And the Charter and Laws.
Of the City of Clearwater.
Of the City of Clearwater.
That I duly qualified.
And that I duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Charter and Laws.
Under the Charter and Laws.
Of the City of Clearwater.
Of the City of Clearwater.
That I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of a police officer.
Of a police officer.
On which I'm now about to enter.
On which I'm now about to enter.
Congratulations Zachary, and Keon, and Justin, and Bethany, Noah, and Maria. Long, happy and healthy career with the Clearwater Police Department. Okay, it's been long gas system, 3.1.
Understood, Mr. Secretary. For the water gas, it's issued to the transportation and alcohol gas.
Assistant Councilman Alex Lee on the Assistant Director for the Gas Department. This item is looking for your assistance in the gas supply contract for the period of ten years. And we'll take the pay in March first, from 2021.
Any questions? What is that? And Parks and Recreation. And Recreation.
Offer as a guarantee, non-helpive, private, key zone activators, for the repair or renovation of the section of boardwalk at Montecristo.
Good afternoon, Matthew Anderson, Assistant Director, Parks and Recreation. The item you have for you is a long coming, due new permitting, through foot mud, NFDB. We'll be repairing the creek, stabilizing it entirely, and the portion that has been damaged. Basically took the bridge out, making repairs to the boardwalk, and replacing the downed bridge with a brand expansion bridge. This is a good opportunity to meet objectives 1.2 and 2.3 from our strategic plan. And a lot of the residents and patrons of the park are very excited to get this back in. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have.
It said it's like a six-month project, so you're thinking by the end of the summer? Should be good.
By the end of the summer. It's gonna really depend. We've been waiting for the dry season, once we got our permits, because it's a creek, so we use the minimal water as possible. And of course, we went from a drought to a very wet winter. So, timing of the start is really gonna be determined that day. But we would hope by the end of summer to be.
Anything else? Is that? 4.2, please.
Under the twelve amendments leased between Chi Chi Rodriguez Youth Foundation and the City of Clearwater.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Art Cader, Parks and Recreation Director. The city and Chi Chi Rodriguez Youth Foundation have a very long history, and it dates back to the early 1980s. When they approached the city, and they began to mentor adolescents' children at Glen Oaks Golf Course. If you may not have known, there was a golf course there. And they did for several years. And after that, and they basically came and they moved off to McMullen Booth Road, where they developed an eighteen-old professional golf course, as well as a driving range that was there on McMullen Booth Road, to continue their mission with adolescents' children. They do this through in-school, after-school, and summer camps. There is a year-round Towns County School Program that operates out of Chi Chi Rodriguez Foundation. And hopefully, in the future, they'll be able to expand that. But this item for you today is the golf course is really over forty years old, and they have some real needs out there. The irrigation system needs to be replaced totally on the golf course, as well as the driving range. Therefore, the foundation is willing to put in 1.9 million dollars to replace that. And for that, they are requesting an additional ten years on their lease. James Polter, Chief Executive Officer, the Chi Chi Rodriguez Foundation is here today, as well as myself, to answer any additional questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Cader, Mr. Polter, regarding this item? Is that?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. 4.3, please.
Better prefer to sort a cement fence company to provide fencing and related services.
Matthew Anderson, Assistant Director, Parks and Recreation. This purchase order will allow not only Parks and Rec, but many other parks in the city to meet their fencing needs. This replaces a previous pigback contract we had with Smith Fence at Towns County. We've also, this is very important, because we're still trying to finish our repairs for the Nalias and fencing needs like that. And process room with FEMA, we have utilized quotes from them. So, that's another reason why it's important we get this approved and along. This meets objectives 1.2, 1.4, and 2.3 of the strategic plan. And it's important for operations.
Any questions or comments?
We had a question about the numbers.
Sure.
Yeah. So, originally on May 5th, 2022, it was 2.2 million, and we were gonna piggyback with the county. And then you said, but the county changed their contract, to Towns County ending their contract number, whatever. Now, it's a 1.2 million. So, my question is, did we save a million, or did we already spend a million? And so, it's reduced, or?
Yeah, we reduced because of what we've already done under the other contract.
Okay. That's okay. But it's not, it's not anymore, right? It's still about 2.2 million dollars?
It's still 2.2.
Okay.
It got changed, but not the end of there, so therefore, it did our contract, so we had to reduce it when saved.
Well, it's good prices haven't gone up, right?
Um, they want to close it, but I believe the part of one county changed their contract.
Anything else on the 5, like you said? You, 4.
Offer as an increase to existing purchaser with Census preparation for the purchase of first aid and station supplies.
Art Cader, Parks and Rec Director. On June 8th, 23, this may look like an item you just recently had, as you have. On June 8th, 23, the City Council approved a purchase order to Census Corporation for a variety of products and services for 2 million dollars, which would go through October 27th. The primary objective of this purchase order was to address citywide access for all departments. The estimates that we did at that time were based on the primary users, which are Parks and Recreation, Public Utilities, and General Services. Once various departments began using Census, they realized all the benefits and the improved cost savings that they could have, and the services they could have. So, we discovered that there were not enough funds to basically last till 2027. Staff is requesting an increase of 1.85 billion, or a total of 3.85 billion for this purchase order. Also, in addition, we are requesting that the purchase order be made for that total amount, rather than having a fixed amount per year. Because in the first agenda item you approved, it basically was per year. Two hundred thousand, I think, with the first six months, and four fifty for the remaining years. We are asking that it just be one purchase order, and you have done that on numerous occasions with other purchase orders. I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments? Is that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. 4.5, please.
Under the list of city events reservation purposes, in accordance with Section 3.11 of the agreements with Ruth Ecker Hall.
Section 3.11 of the venue license agreement with Ruth Ecker Hall requires that the city provide at least 365 days notice prior to scheduling one of the ten days, the events that basically are allowed in the agreement. To meet these time restrictions, staff is bringing forth this item to you today for your attention, for discussion, and for direction. We have included ten events that have been suggested by the community, as well as staff, to consider. The downside of what we're offering of some of those events are the costs, which we have provided for you in a separate attachment. Please realize that these are only rough estimates, and they're basically based on limited experience that we've had thus far, rather than actual costs. And as we plan these events, the cost hopefully will be reduced. I'd like to point out that Ruth Ecker Hall and the city are currently engaged in negotiations for Amendment Number One to the agreement. We need to clear up some things. We've had six months, basically, of operations. You don't know what you're gonna get. And if you read the quote I said, "It's like a marriage," you know, you don't know what you're gonna get, and you get it, and you gotta work it out. And that's, that's, well, I don't know. I mean, you kinda have to do that, I don't know what I'm talking about. So, that's what we're doing. Ruth Ecker Hall and the city are getting together, and we're trying to work some things out in the language, and those types of things. And so, there are some things we are currently negotiating that are gonna affect this item, so I'd like to mention them to you. First, we are looking at changing the 365 days notice to 180 days, really cutting that in half. And if we do this, it will help both the city and Ruth Ecker Hall, will be more flexible in our scheduling, to meet even the needs of the community. The second item, that Ruth Ecker Hall and the city are looking at ways to reduce the cost. And one way is simply to hold community events at a center, rather than large, or larger events that we have listed. We've listed a couple of Tampa Bay Orchestra events, but if you see there, the cost that we've been given so far is a very high number to have in here. However, we put that, that number in there for you, which is 150,000 dollars per performance. So, we are looking at basically doing neighborhood events. If we do that, and we work with Ruth Ecker Hall, we, there will not be any cost from Ruth Ecker Hall to us, the city. That way, we are staffing, now there'll be some costs for city staffing to work in those places, for instance, like security, ushers, cleaning, custodial, those types of things, we will use city staff, rather than using Ruth Ecker Hall staff. So, I think this is a good direction that we can do. An example of a neighborhood event would be something like we held yesterday, Martin Luther King Jr. event, Neighborhoods Day, Summer Olympics event, a holiday event. Those are all based toward the neighborhood and toward community. So, those are two things that we are negotiating, as well as other, other items. And Ruth Ecker Hall is very positive on both of those items, I might say. We hope to wrap up negotiations within the next couple of weeks with Ruth Ecker Hall, and hope to bring that item to you the last meeting in February, but it may be actually March, if that's the case. We're working very hard. Negotiations take a long time, as you know. You have to deal with lawyers and everything else, and you don't know how that is legal stuff. Mr. Cook and I are available to answer any questions you might have regarding the proposed list of events. But we are recommending that the council either table this item until a later time to get additional information, or at the time when we bring back the amendment to. With that, I'll unhitch you, answering any of your questions.
Questions, comments?
I agree. Let's table it, just so I would like to make this to you with more information.
Great. Good. Yeah. It's big one.
Thank you.
I'll give it to Police Department 5.1.
Reap by Jeffrey DeVincent to the Board of Trustees, their water lease out to supplement their pension trust fund.
Is that? Did I take the pretty first here? No, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. I am Deputy Bertie Berg, Clearwater Police Department, and I'm also a trustee on the Clearwater Police Officer's supplementary pension trust fund. As where State Statute 18.05 requires, the majority of the Board of Trustees to select a fifth trustee for counsel to consider. A meeting of the Board of Trustees was held on December 25th, 2023. Sergeant Jeffrey DeVincent was chosen by majority vote. Sergeant DeVincent has agreed to serve another four-year term as a fifth trustee from February 1st, 2024, into January 31st, 2028. The Board of Trustees, Clearwater Police Officers Supplementary Pension Board, has recommended that Sergeant Jeffrey DeVincent be appointed to the Board of Trustees. I would take any questions if you have any.
Any questions, comments? Is that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
5.2, please.
That is a five-year renewal agreement between the city and American Traffic Solutions, doing business as a pair of mobility systems for red light camera enforcement.
Good afternoon, Mayor Councilmember, Deputy Chief Michael Wall, Clearwater Police Department. I have a foreword to approve a five-year renewal agreement between the city and Clearwater and American Traffic Solutions, Inc., doing business as a pair of mobility for the red light camera enforcement program. Since 2011, the Clearwater Police Department has utilized red light camera technology for red light camera enforcement at three intersections. One at Chestnut and Fort Harrison, and two at Gulf Bay and Belcher, Eastbound and Westbound. Under the terms of this new agreement, the city of air mobility would enter into a five-year agreement at the beginning of the date the agreement was signed. The financial terms of the agreement are the same as the existing agreement, and are locked into the duration of the five-year period. The city would pay air mobility $4,270 per month, per camera, for the three cameras, which equals $12,810 per month, or $153,720 per year, and $768,600 for the entire five-year agreement. Under this new agreement, and at no additional cost, is an upgrade of the cameras to modern technology, and the addition of three flock cameras, LPR licensed plate reading cameras, that will bring our city total to 23 cameras. The funds from the red light camera program do not go from the police, do not go to the police department, they go to the city. From our perspective, reduced citations have revenues, is a positive thing, because it shows that people are more cautious at the intersection where the cameras are, due to learned behaviors, and from information obtained from navigational apps, such as Red Light Camera Head, School Zone Head. While the research studies suggest increase in rear collisions because of red light cameras, the goal is to prevent the most dangerous collisions, which is T-boat collisions, where vehicles speed up to beat the light, subsequently causing some of the vehicle left or return. Based on the current data, I do not see, I do not see an increase of rear collisions, again, with similar behavior. It is very hard to identify a red light camera as a mechanism for solely causing a crash, due to the other environmental issues. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments?
We had a question, so. We have three cameras.
Correct.
Did you say it sounds better? We have 23 cameras?
So, we have three cameras. One camera at Gulf Bay and Belcher Eastbound, one Gulf Bay, Belcher Westbound, and one at Fort Harrison and Chestnut. If we enter into this new agreement, it will give us three additional flock cameras, which are licensed plate reading technology cameras, which we already have 20, which will bring our total to 23.
Okay.
At no charge to us.
Okay. And then, so we pay $12,810 a month for those three cameras? And then, we're gonna get the additional licensed plate reading cameras with this new contract?
Correct.
And certainly, as you said, when people know there's a red light camera, hopefully, they slow down and don't try to race through it, right?
Correct.
And so, we have those good positives, fewer crashes, we save lives. Do you have any, do we have data on the, um, the revenue we get from ticket enforcement?
I do have the numbers in front of me.
Okay. I'm gonna do this. Is our, does our staff send out the tickets, and stuff, or does it get automated with the system?
It does. We have a red light camera viewing person, that's a retired sergeant in the Clearwater Police Department. He's a water checks program, he's a part-time employee. He approves or denies that he were usable, accepts them or denies them, and sends them off. And then, at that point, if they don't abide by taking, paying the $515, or electing to go to court, that goes to a useful traffic ticket, which could have additional implications, fines.
Did you not want to share that number?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So, to 2023, the net revenue was 294,382.53. If I have it all the way back to 2016, if you need that, is it?
Oh, good. It's just, it's just nice to have a data reference, but, um, yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's good to have them at those keeper sections. Thanks.
Anybody else want to talk? Is that?
Yes.
You, your name is 6.1.
That's Order 9721 on second reading for appealing the Clearwater Comprehensive Plan, replacing it with Clearwater 2045.
Good evening. Jimmy Ross for Planning and Development. Very happy to finally be before you for a second meeting adoption of our comprehensive plan, Clearwater 2045. It's several year process, but I wanted to take your second and thank everybody who was involved, who was led by long-range planning, but we did involve almost every other department in the city to make sure we have a broad plan that represented all city services in it. And you'll recall, it came through first reading in October 2023. And at that meeting, it was sent to Towns County, as well as several state agencies for their review. There was a 30-day review and Twitter review, and at that point, we did receive four letters back from state agencies, and all of those letters contained no comments, meaning they requested no changes to the plan. So, the plan comes back before you today, as you saw in October, with the exception that we did make some radical changes, editorial changes. We had some spellings, punctuation, grammatical changes, formatting things that were, um, wanted to make it a really clean document when we brought it back for adoption. So, those are the changes you will see from October to today. Now, we have any questions?
Any questions or comments? Thank you very much. 6.2, please.
Under the amendments to the Community Development Code, reestablishing certain previously rescinded amendments determined to be null and void pursuant to the Florida Senate Bill 250.
Thank you, Congress President, for planning and development. So, this member before you proposed to reestablish certain previously rescinded amendments, which were determined to be null and void pursuant to Florida Senate Bill 250 in 2023, and those were rescinded through Orders 9712-23. So, the district on April 4th, 2023, City Council approved the Orders Number 9643-23, which made a variety of amendments to the Community Development Code. On June 23rd, 2023, the governor signed a law, Senate Bill 250, which placed certain restrictions on municipalities entirely or partially within 100 miles of landfall, under the hurricanes Ian or Nicole. More specifically, the bill stated that municipalities may not propose or adopt more burdensome amendments or more restrictive amendments to the comprehensive plans or the Community Development Code prior to October 1st, 2024, and this restriction applied retroactively to September 28th, 2022. And the bill further declared that any such amendment shall be declared null and void. So, November 2nd, 2023, Orders Number 9712-23 was adopted by City Council, which rescinded those sections of Orders 9643, determined to be null and void. In early November 2023, this legislature held a special session, in which House Bowl 1C was relented, and signed into law by the governor on November 13th, 2023. House Bowl 1C amended the likelihood from 100 miles of landfall to certain specific counties, in which Pinnellis County was not one. Due to this, more restrictive or burdensome provisions no longer apply to the city. So, Planning Development Department has determined that the proposed text of amendments to the Community Development Code are consistent with the comprehensive plan, as well as the Community Development Code that is outlined in the staff report. The Community Development Board will hear these proposed amendments at the January 18th Community Development Board meeting, and staff will report their recommendations to City Council on the evening of January 2018. Do you have to answer any questions?
Questions or comments? Okay, thank you. 1.3, please.
Accept the annual report of status and transfers of development rights.
Thank you, Congress President, for planning and development. This report provides the annual status of transfers of developments, or TBRs. A TBR is a conveyance of development or its ID, easement, or another legal instrument for a parcel of parcels of land in a sending site, to another parcel of parcels of land received in site. Since last year, there have been no additional TBR applications received by the department. However, two applications are under review. Case TBR 2023-05001 proposes to transfer 25 hotel units from 830 Bayway Boulevard to 301 South Gulfview Boulevard. And case TBR 2023-08001 proposes to transfer one hotel unit and two block units from 692 Bayas One Hot to, and 64 Somerset Drive to 685 Bayas One Hot. And since 1999, thirty-seven TBR applications have been received by the Department, and the status of those is within your cover memo.
Any questions or comments?
So, the two, um, the middle paragraph, two applications have been submitted and are currently in review, and you named those. So, case 05001 proposes to transfer 25 hotel units from 830 Bayway Boulevard to 301 South Gulfview Boulevard. And 830 Bayway Boulevard is, is a Clearwater Yacht Club. And 301 South Gulfview Boulevard is the Hyatt Regency Clearwater Beach Resort and Spa that's already built. So, how, how are you taking 25 hotel units from the yacht club and putting them in the Hyatt that's already built and operating?
Do you have a?
Do you have a plan in development? The yacht club has development rights that are not being used at this time. And if the case moves forward that Kyle mentioned, which is kind of in a holy pattern right now, they plan to, I think, change some of their suites into smaller units instead of Hyatt. So, that's how they'll incorporate 25 hotel rooms, doing some interior renovations.
So, don't they get approved for a certain number of hotel rooms, and then they build it?
They would have to go back through the cyclone 3D process to.
To ask to change those larger suites into smaller ones, so they get more density there?
Correct.
And then, what does the, the yacht club get in return? Just cash money?
Money.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, you know, so, when those TBRs get moved around, an existing building, even if it's, an existing hotel, even if it's relatively new, can still subdivide, if they're not gonna build on, they can subdivide some of those smaller rooms, that's okay? It just has to be, go before the CDV?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to? Is that?
Yes.
Thank you. Maria in Aviation 7.1.
Under the joint participation agreement between the city and the State of Florida Department of Transportation, apartment 5 expansion.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. This is just another one of those MDOT, JSE, grant opportunities. That's gonna be a part of the terminal expansion. This just. Uh, this just races out to eighty-twenty grand, uh, to where able to build the, uh, parking lot with the terminal project, uh, terminal project construction is going to be a fifty-fifty grand. So this just allows us to utilize more state money.
Any questions? Thank you, seven one two, please.
Approved an agreement with the Department of, uh, Transportation for a geotechnical survey of the airport property.
This is another, uh, grant opportunity through MDOT, and this just allows us to go ahead and do a survey of the entire airport and do, uh, some geotech work, um, that hasn't been done. The entire site hasn't been done with all the projects coming up. We'll be able to utilize that and save cost on design, again, as another eighty-twenty split in the city.
This is, on this one specifically, but there's like three here or so that you've got, three, three, four, five, six, on these grants that are phenomenal that we talked about, um, that, that would be available, um, with our new operator, but do you have a timeline, like, how about when improvements will start to be made, construction will start?
Well, we're working on a work order now for the, the design of the terminal. So once we get that design rolling, uh, the construction grant come out in July for the terminal, we'll be able to put a timeline together based on that.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, seven one three, please.
Amendment Clearwater Development Board since chapter thirty-three, creating a civil penalty for unlimited use of city-owned marine facilities.
So chapter thirty-three Waterways and Vessels sets forth the rules and use regulations that govern all city Clearwater waterways, the conduct of all persons using such waterways, and, uh, and the city-owned marine facilities. These articles have not been amended or updated since two thousand and ten. The ordinance is needed to clarify, quantify, and revise use regulations for the marine facilities and the conduct that occurs at these facilities. The city has determined that these amendments to the code of ordinance promote and support the safety and welfare of the city's residents, users of the city's marine facilities, and as well as the business interests of the city, which runs some of the facilities as a form of business. Do you have any chance for any questions?
I have a camera question on page nine of the ordinance. There's a, uh, a statement there that there are approximately thirty illegal charters operating on public marine.
Correct. So what that is, 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 uh, to use the term illegal is they don't have a license agreement. So the city doesn't know if these people have insurance, if they're Coast Guard certified to be able to, to carry passengers and do all that search warrant. So it protects the tourists that are coming.
But we haven't, we've chosen not to enforce these illegal charters?
We haven't, we haven't been able to, this will allow us, the, the police to enforce that.
Okay.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, so this will stop some of the, uh, the RBO votes out there from getting their passengers at the city docks and moving them over, which has been a problem for a lot of complaints.
Correct. This just gives the, the, the police tools to be able to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Approved the joint participation agreement between the city and the state of Florida Department of Transportation for designing from neighbors of the Clearwater Airport.
This is, uh, more part of the lease with Fly USA, uh, they're going to put in some corporate hangers according to their lease, and this just gives us the design funding for those corporate hangers at eighty-twenty.
Approved joint participation agreement between the city and the state of Florida Department of Transportation, authorizing a transfer from airport run revenues.
Uh, this is for the GPS approach that we're putting in, or that Fly USA is putting in at the airport. Uh, it required us to have a two-hundred-foot off-center line of the runway at an elevation of one-twenty. So that vegetation that's on, uh, runway one-six, uh, on the, on the left-hand side, that needs to come out to be able to, to, to abide by FAA regulations for this GPS approach. So that's what this money is going to allow us to do.
Any questions?
Does vegetation mean shrubbery, mature trees? Are, you know, a bunch of trees going to come down that people are going to notice and want to know what's going on?
I'm not for sure how much that is going to require us to cut back that area. Uh, but yeah, it's going to remove a, a big portion of that area.
Of mature trees?
Yes, mostly.
Shrubbers?
Yeah.
Is there a way you could have like a aerial view of what's going to be taken out?
Sure.
Just, just to be aware? I mean, you need to do what you need to do for that GPS, but just so that if people, you know, see trees coming down and, and riding, they'd like to know, you know?
Okay.
This is what the plan was.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Eight, uh, eight point one, under Public Utilities.
Approved a change order for TLC diversify to accept a project completion by a hundred and eighty days.
Lieutenant Lieutenant Counsel, uh, Rich Gardner, Director of Public Utilities. This project consists of demolishing the current lift station, constructing a new four-point-nine MDT million gallons per day lift station located at the western end of Pier Street. Originally, the project completion date was May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, based on the notice receipt of September one, twenty twenty-three, which include two hundred and seventy calendar days for construction. Due to multiple factors that are out of contractors', uh, controls such as low supply prices, shipping delays, manufacturer delays from component manufacturers, the contractor requests the contract duration be extended an additional hundred and eighty days, uh, to November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. There is no increase in the budget for TLC, the contraption, as well as for the engineer of record. I'm asking for approval on this time extension and happy to respond to any questions.
Questions or comments?
Was there any kind of clause in the, in the contract that they had to pay a penalty if they had a delay or ask for a delay? Or is this just courtesy for us?
Um, there's no penalty if they ask for a delay. But, um, if they, if, if you don't approve this delay and they, and they go past it, there wouldn't be a penalty and we all be in court.
Anything else, please? Is that?
Yeah.
Give me one, two, please.
Affirmed a work order for to sort Black and Beach for engineering support of the northeast water removal facility digester cover repair project.
Uh, this project is for the design and repairs of the northeast digester. The reason for this project is because methane gas is leaking from the northeast digester. The risk of the methane leak in northeast was reduced in twenty twenty-one while a flame arrester was installed on the roof end, but this project is for the permanent repair. We believe that the leaks are caused by multiple cracks in the floating cover. This is similar to what we found at the Murch Street digester, and both digesters are the same structures. The item before you today is for Black and Beach to design the repairs from the northeast digester, and I'm asking for your approval. I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Discussion on this.
So no continued danger of fire, and do you have a timeline for that completion?
Um, the, uh, never say never.
Yeah.
Don't say no. It's, it's very low risk, uh, but we're concerned, that's why we're bringing this program forward.
And when do you think it'll all be designed and completed and installed?
We're hoping to have it designed and complete this year, and then construction will start.
Okay.
Affirmed a work order for to sort Black and Beach for the two thousand twenty-four project management services.
One of the utilities engineering group's responsibilities is to manage capital improvement projects for the public utilities department. There's a significant number of capital improvement projects that need to be completed by the public utilities department over the next few years. Due to the abundance of projects and limited staff resources available to manage the projects, additional support is required. The item before you today is for Black and Beach to help us manage several of those capital projects, and I'm asking for your approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
This is for sixteen months, right? Not just a year?
Yes.
Okay.
Appoint Julia Maranka to the Mission Five Two Committee to fill her main of unexpired terms, table one, two thousand twenty-four. Council members, at, at the November thirteenth work session, uh, you direct staff to promptly replace a little mayor seat. And so this is the only avenue we have to file, and, yeah, any questions?
Is that?
Yes.
Thank you. Number one, two, please.
Appoint individuals to nuisance the basement board with terms as follows. One individual to fill an unexpired term through September one, two thousand twenty-seven. One individual to fill an unexpired term through June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. And one appointment, and one appointed to a term through January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-eight. Council members, we've had a couple of vacancies on this board. Um, Sir Chris Chino had resigned, um, after the last meeting, so he resigned early this year, um, January three, two thousand twenty-four. Um, Ms. Mary Lane, um, resigned back in October, and that was due to time constraints. She just did not have the time to commit to the board. And although the board does not meet frequently, there, we do have a standing, uh, meeting. She just wasn't unable to do it because of work commitments, and Ms. Lancy, um, she completed her, her term. For your consideration, I have applications for John Carey, um, Chelsea Gerd, who is currently serving on our civil service board. So if she is appointed this board, she will have to resign from civil service, and that would be a big issue there. And Jonathan Wade. Reopening, so I would need to know who, how you wish to fill those openings.
So did you create with Chelsea about choosing one or the other, and this is the board she wants to serve on?
She submitted many boards, um, so this isn't the only board, but she knows that she will not be able to serve on both.
Okay.
On both, and I have the, based on my last conversation with her, she is wanting to get off on civil service.
So we just have basically decided.
What terms?
Which term? Term expires, which you like?
I reckon it's fine with, uh, John Carey doing an expired term through September first, two thousand twenty-seven. Chelsea and, uh, I guess through June twenty-ninth. Jonathan Wade, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-eight.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Last one, please. Yes, I can't agree with you, we just pointed, all right?
Yes, so it may have been something. Okay. Seven point one?
Mayor, ten point one is under my agenda for city attorney's items. Uh, this is to improve the Green University Lobby Services, the little law firm, Jones Walker. Uh, are longtime obvious for the city, Pete and Martha, and Martha and Phil are leading D B. Their current law firm is D B, is the class A, and so Pete and Martha are going over, uh, to Jones Walker. And so, based on the fact that we are a city clerk, it seems to have, it appears that there's pretty high-grade satisfaction with Pete and Martha's services. Uh, therefore, there's desire to continue with them or remain with them, uh, back there.
Keep Martha going along with me?
Yeah, and me.
Is it the same contract price?
Same contract price and same terms, so they're just finishing their current, um, contracts. How can the, and the contract really go through the whole process?
Okay. And I, um, so, you know, I'm part of the Suncoast League of Cities, so I represent us and, um, and the Suncoast League of Cities, representing multiple municipalities in, in a few counties, sets different priorities, and we have weekly legislative update calls on Monday. Um, so we had one last night, um, as, you know, as, as a legislation, legislatures in session. And, uh, there were a couple of things that I reached out to Jennifer to ask about, especially for municipalities that have their own utilities and, um, trash. And, uh, I was informed, I didn't know, but we have, there's a weekly call that, um, Pete and Martha do for staff or leadership, you know, a legislator update or?
The Florida League of Cities every Monday has a weekly conference call offering sessions, so I participate on that.
Okay.
And then, uh, at, during that time, it's, they review those bills that are being scheduled for the week or for the following week, and have requests of staff, so I can, I coordinate, and then provide that information to our lobbyists, the information, the data that I get from staff.
Okay. So where our, um, legislative liaison had asked the Suncoast League of Cities participants on our Monday call to ask about, like, the wasting utility bill, it would be similar to what Florida League of Cities? Because Suncoast League and Florida League are pretty lockstep, you know? So it's the same information?
It's probably the same information that they're looking for, so as soon as I receive that from, specifically to this bill, um, I don't think it's going to be of an impact because it's talking about utilities to serve customers or water, like water or wastewater to those outside city limits, which is not an issue for us. The only thing that they do have currently in the, the substitute bill is that it is now a requirement for at all of the exact, that could be, but every seven years you would have to have a rate study. I don't think the city may be in any issue with that, because I mean, we do conduct rate studies more frequently than every seven years. So for us, technically, it is not an issue, but in, in an effort to support other municipalities, of course, we would say it would be a home role.
Okay. Would it apply, it would apply to our gas, because we don't have a sign?
No, it right now, they specifically to water and wastewater utilities.
Okay.
They haven't included the gas or the lunchroom yet.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Mayor, thank you, too, or just a second reading for Eastman, have any answer questions?
Any questions? City manager verbal reports.
P, P S T A Transit Center update.
Good afternoon, Jeanne White, Planning and Development. I'm here today in your, uh, desire to have an update on this project that you know we've been working with P S T A for quite some time. Uh, the site is located in our downtown court, in the corner, corner of Myrtle Avenue and Court Street. As we got, um, involved in working with P S T A on the design, we, uh, uh, found that our downtown code doesn't really address this kind of facility. So as you know, you passed an amendment to the code to allow for flexibility from the design criteria as long as the design of the P S T A facility creates a safe and comfortable pedestrian environment along pedestrian walkways and along our public sidewalks, and then meets the development standards to the greatest extent practical. This site has created some challenges to P S T A specifically. It has, uh, advantage of two F D O T rights of way, which gives F D O T a lot of, of authority over how access is done to the site, as well as the site elevation. So I wanted to update you on where we are with the, the design. We're still pretty early in the process. We're at thirty percent, or there at thirty percent design. So there's still going to be a lot of work to do, but we believe we've resolved the most significant issues. Uh, for example, Public Works identified a lot of circulation concerns, as well as some issues with crew cut locations. But based on the results of the simulation, Public Works had asked P S T A to do. They've been able to come to agreement on mitigation measures to address those concerns. And if you have any questions about those, Marcus, for Public Works, is here, you can answer any questions. Our department, Planning and Development, has really been focused on compliance with the downtown design standards. Uh, one of the issues that has been out there for a while is the design of the designated key corner of Myrtle and Court. And we're still working through, uh, this design, but I think at our last meeting, we really came to a better understanding of what needs to be done, and I think we're moving in the right direction. Uh, I would like to clarify that the design that was presented in your, um, packet did not incorporate those, but we definitely are moving in the right direction and will continue to work with them on that. I think probably one of the most challenging issues from a site di, uh, design perspective has been the elevation of the site, and that really And that really created a lot of challenges, causing a great difference between the site and the sidewalk. So the site was not, when we were looking at it a few months ago, we were not creating a safe pedestrian environment. So our city engineer provided P S T A with some examples of malls that have been used in the city. So P S T A's designers looked at those and they figured out that they could make that work for their site as well. And so now they've been able to solve that problem where we'll have a seamless transition between the public sidewalk and the site. Another issue that has been out there is the width of the sidewalk. Our Complete Streets Implementation Plan requires a pedestrian zone of eight to twelve feet and a curb zone of two feet. But due to the side constraints and the right-of-way constraints, this has been very challenging. So P S T A has worked to really squeeze the design of their site. And they now have a sidewalk width of eight feet. So we believe that are maybe the intent on the Complete Streets Implementation Plan. And this has really resulted in a very positive change. So another issue that we're still working on is related to these Duke Energy poles that are located along Myrtle Avenue frontage. And obviously, the goal and our code's goal is to get those placed underground. And right now, as you can see in this elevation, the poles have not been placed underground. And based on my understanding of what Duke has told P S T A is that they would need to have four poles that you can see would obstruct the sidewalk. Our goal is to continue to work with P S T A on this. Our Public Works Department has engaged Duke to see about getting the cost for undergrounding utilities in front of this site as well as City Hall. Because obviously, this is a major goal for us as well for City Hall. So worst-case scenario, if somehow it was determined undergrounding cannot be achieved, we would like to continue to work with P S T A on the placement of these poles, maybe into their landscape planters that they have, if at all possible. So because we're still early in the design and the design architecture is still evolving, we'll continue to work with them to ensure they comply, those buildings comply with downtown zoning standards. So overall, I think we've made great progress and we've certainly worked out the big issues. And we're looking forward to moving forward with the project. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments on this? Very important. Yes.
So it's good that we're to the point where we're almost there. When do you think we could, when do you think P S T A can close on this property?
I'll defer to the city attorney on that matter.
Yeah, no, great, great question. So from my perspective, we can close as soon as the city manager tells me we're ready to close. We are, we are under a contract with P S T A and have been for quite some time. Technically, our current contract says we should have closed by the end of October. But it's not really a problem because the only parties with the contract are us and P S T A. And as long as the two parties are in agreement and we're working on issues, I see no legal problem with us continuing to work on those issues and having a later closing. I've also advised staff, and I have no problem saying publicly, that I don't foresee the need for us to make the process longer or more bureaucratic by coming back with a formal contract amendment. That would require me to engage with P S T A's attorney and then go through a more formal process. Once we're at a place when city staff are comfortable that we can close the middle state, we can start closing the middle state. So I don't foresee any need for that part of it to come back to council. The only things to think about are going to be our city staff and P S T A in agreement as to a lot of these issues. What I have suggested to city staff is that we might not want to memorialize in some way with P S T A some of the agreements that have been reached on the design side as well as other, you know, things like that, traffic flow, things of that nature. We don't have to make it as formal as a development agreement, things like that. As Clayton has expressed, her preference to not go that route, understandably, because that is rather cumbersome process. But I would hate for any of us to be in a situation, six months from now or a year from now, where P S T A understood it one way, we understood it a different way. And then there's miscommunication. I'd rather work that out now before we actually close on the real estate. And so even something as informal as an email from Mr. Miller, I think would be reasonable. Just confirming back and forth between, you know, our staff and theirs to make sure that we're all on the same page, I think would be a good idea. But that said, from my point of view, as soon as the city manager says, David, we're clear to close, I will go ahead and handle the closing with P S T A's attorney. I have reached out to P S T A's attorney. I'd let him know that as well. I don't foresee the need for us to make it, again, more bureaucratic than necessary.
Thank you.
I just want to state how I fully appreciate the amount of effort that our staff took, you and your department, to come to this stage. I know where the floor is. Both parties had to do a lot of changes. I just thank you for that effort.
I agree with that. I think we've all been very supportive of this project. And it looked for a while like this was not going to work at that property. But I'm glad that we've been able to solve those issues.
Me too.
I would like to say that P S T A staff is here, but he's right here.
Thank you. And you put a lot of our work into to work on our state to make this happen. And we're looking forward to it. Thank you very much. Okay, city attorney, verbal reports. I have that right here. And business. Let us follow each other.
At the next work session, I can give an update on our C O C and what's been going on there.
Any else? Okay, I'm going to use my time to talk about something that came up. And I think it's best to talk about this in a work session. It couldn't be on the agenda if we didn't have enough time to get it on the agenda. And that's to do with the letters that we have from. Okay, it's back when, one hundred and thirty-nine people went to North Beach. I did a lot of research. I went it down, drew that area from Mr. Slaughter on Friday, to see where all the flooding was. I had a lot of questions, because we did some complaints from citizens and from other people down the line. When I looked at the list, I was concerned about who it went to and why it went to certain homes. So I did some research, the help of the city manager. And there were some emails that, according to our rules, were provided to me by our attorney and I think our city manager. A council member can respond to someone who asks them a question. They're allowed to do that. But I don't know how that translates into when there was a handful of emails that went out to one hundred and thirty-one citizens. So I've got some questions about that. But let me just give you a little bit of the chronologic order that came up. So on January third, there were emails that came out in the middle of December, maybe December twentieth. January third, council member investment sent to city manager. The question that canvassing North Beach and some info that her opponent reported to me, her opponent reported to me to provide to residents. The last sentence of the email said, I'd like to continue to canvass and prepare candidate forms. I always want to be as well-prepared as possible with the most up-to-date and accurate information to communicate to residents. Yeah, I'm not sure that should have been a email to the city manager. It had something to do with campaigning, which is the main point this morning. That was followed on January fourth by a response from the city manager. And I'm going to read that because it's very important. I appreciate your patience as we read the questions. I know you appreciate the staff, myself, especially for the ethics attendance of the I C M A, specifically ten to seven, as to walk a fine line ensuring you're not engaging in campaign activities. I work very hard to ensure, I work very hard to ensuring all council is aware of major issues going on in the city, so that none of you are caught off guard at any time. As such, my responses aren't provided as a current council member information. It is not intended to validate or debunk any campaign-related circumstances. This next response is a read and it gives one to respond to the apparently three major questions that the council member brought up, which are hurtful people. So I then took a look at the letter that was prepared. And it was prepared by helping me prepare by staff, correct, with information?
The letter was sent to staff.
So staff comes out, correct?
Correct.
Any idea how many, three people, at least, you, Mr. Slaughter and one other person, correct? And then our assistant, Ms. Cummings, was asked to print the letters and provide the letter that was printed and envelopes in this back room to be sent out. And just personally, on her own directory. We're all providing a copy of the letter and the mail in this. This is the policy since city business is about the records, we all saw them. After I looked at the list, I questioned why so many letters went out? And then didn't follow the council's whole policy basis with the mayor. Was the notice sent out? So I'm curious as to whether the city manager was involved. I knew this was going to go out to one hundred and thirty-nine people who were close. So we got letters from the residents.
I was not aware that it was going to come out, per se, the list of residents. I knew that there was several emails that had been exchanged to multiple council members regarding the flooding issues out on North Beach. And so my interpretation is that this was going to be a response for her to go and provide. If she had additional questions for residents.
So then when I went out, I wrote with Assistant City Manager Slaughter. And it was told by Sam Hutton, who's the president of the Beach Association. I was curious why Sam didn't work. I mean, he represents one hundred and fifty people and he's been on top of this issue and asking questions. So I was curious as to who got the letters, why. Bruce, Lantana, Narcissus are the main streets of the water. So Bruce, Lantana, Narcissus, Bruce has about ninety-four homes. This is coming from the Rangers. Eighty-three on Lantana and forty-two on Narcissus. Narcissus has got zero lives. Bruce got twenty-four lives. Lantana got eighteen. Florida Beach has about six hundred blown homes, one hundred and thirty blown letters on land, which is about twenty-two percent. So then I clicked on the link, the letters, one hundred and thirty-nine people. And what comes up is DNC, Democratic National Committee, voteability. Now, I don't understand how that can be done. Apparently, I'd like to find out from you where you got this list and how you utilized it, why you utilized it. When the city manager told you before the letter went out that she can't help you with something like this, is there a violation of ethics with the city manager association? And to me, it's a clear violation of ethics here that this was basically campaigning, electionery, city time, using some city resources. That's totally, totally against what we stand for. And I just, I just can't, I hate even bringing this up, but I have to. It's my job. I can't, there's no seat in the elections. I can't believe this happened, if it happened, the way it was. So, in full transparency, where this was coming from?
So I've been a council member for four years. And I ran on a platform of engaging with residents. And when I ran, I knocked on thousands of doors. And every time I interacted with someone, I kept data on who I knocked a door with, what that conversation was. And I have that all logged in spreadsheets. That's my personal business. For the last four years, I have continuously engaged with residents via a website and a newsletter. And I build that, those contacts and that information that I have. I keep it because it's important to me to continue to engage with residents. And I send out letters, I've sent out letters throughout my four-year tenure. When residents of Drew Street signed a petition that they wanted Drew Street kept safe, I've sent letters that I composed on city council member letterhead to let them know when we have meetings and Drew Street's going to be addressed. Because that's what they care about. And I want to keep them informed. I have contact information of people on North Beach that I know care about flooding. I actually went out there and walked around with water up to my knees because residents called me on that December twentieth or whatever it was. Kathleen, can you come out here and take a look at this? Spent about two and a half hours walking around the flooded water. Again, I took down names, information, I took pictures, I took video. I told people I would stay in touch with them. That's what I did. When we had information shared with us about the need for more lift stations, about smoke detector, smoke tests for our stormwater. When I attended the North Beach Neighborhood Association meeting and Dan Slaughter gave an update, I took extensive notes. And so that was the only letter that I had shared with Jennifer, the one that I'd composed as an update to people on North Beach, because I wanted to make sure it was accurate. The other letters, I had full control of. I knew exactly when the meeting was on Drew Street. I could direct them to the agenda items, all that stuff. This one, I just wanted to make sure that I understood it clearly when I took my notes, you know, from when Dan gave his presentation at the Clearwater Beach Association meeting. And so that was the clarification for that. I send it out on council member letterhead because even though I'm a candidate, I am still a council member and I work full-time as a council member, keeping residents informed of what goes on. And I send it out in my council member letterhead, just like I have done for the last four years. And I file those with Tammy. I'm going to be sending congratulation notes to some graduates of an ARPA program that I'm not able to attend because I have a prior commitment. I send those on my council member letterhead. I have every right to reach out to people and congratulate them for things that they do in the city. You know, I've had, I've had different, I've had an organization, Three Sixty Eats, that operates within our community that has asked for a letter of support as a council member. And I write that on my council member letterhead. That's shared. I mean, I'm fully transparent, but I'm not going to apologize for sending letters out to people that I know and that I've recorded their addresses. I pay for the stamps.
How do you explain every single hyperlink on one hundred and thirty-nine letters to the DNC vote? When you click on there, it comes up every single time.
A hyperlink on what?
On, on the names that were provided to Tammy. It's a political list that was used to send these letters. And the city administrator system helped prepare the letters. City staff helped you with the information.
They ran it off, they ran it off, that's it. It's on letterhead.
It's clearly not something that you did.
Whoever I send it to is whoever I send it to. Did you want to check the voter registration of everybody on Drew Street? Everybody with a North Beach would say all right?
First of all, that letter showed up from the mayor. We have the entire council, to the entire residential base. It's a political system. It's a conspiracy plan, not handpicked from a Democratic National Committee site that are predilect voters. When you Google what this is, it says it's the gold standard in political campaign technology. It's for Democratic campaigns.
It's communication. I choose to communicate with who I want to as a council member. I can communicate with whoever I want. If you want to listen, I communicate with people nonpartisan all throughout.
Do you understand how Democrats?
It doesn't look that.
The city manager told you she can't be involved with the Slaughter?
She's not involved in political things.
She provided you information.
She provided all of us with the exact same information, which is factual.
The list, but it's that our administrator system typed it or typed off when engaged.
She did not type it up.
She sent you copies for you to get handed to you.
I am communicating as part of my job. My job does not stop me, stop because I'm a candidate.
Mr. Mark, on this? I spoke to you about this, but this is before this came to light. And you said at first you didn't say anything. Now what about this?
Well, every city attorney's worst nightmare is to get in this situation, which is being asked to kick aside between council members and a public agent. This is the scenario that every city attorney dreads the most. Most do not have to live through it. I have the misfortune of living through it. So here are my thoughts. If we just kind of step back for a second and think about what are the legal issues, right, that are actually involved in solving a very sterile analysis? So one of them are the sets of issues under the Florida Election Code, which is state law that governs all elections in Florida, including municipal elections. And then separate from the Florida Election Code, we have council pools, which are specific to their order, local to us, et cetera, to get very different sets of things with very different enforcement mechanisms. On the first part of it, on the Florida Election Code, I think that the question that would arise, and I want to emphasize that I'm expressing no opinion on it and that I'm not taking any sides on it. But I think the question is, I understand it, would be whether this type of letter sent under these circumstances qualifies as an expenditure under Florida law. When something qualifies as an expenditure under Florida law, it generally has to go party campaign. party campaign reporting, campaign treasury, and you guys all know, you pay for our campaign accounts, et cetera. Again, I'm expressing no opinion as to whether this actually is an expenditure or not, but I think that's kind of the question that would arise if it was something that was being looked at or a complaint was submitted to the Florida Elections Commission, which is the entity responsible for investigating that sort of thing. City Attorney's Office has no opinion on that, we take no sides on it, we sure sell out filing complaints or defendant, against complaints that are filed either by or from council members against council members. We say how the politics as far as we can, I know the city manager feels it's the safe way to put it. The second issue, totally unrelated to state law as it pertains to the Florida Election Code, is our council rules and how we respond to constituents, right? State law, you guys all the time, through a variety of formal as well as informal channels. We currently have a council rule relating to stationery. That rule long predates my time in the city, but that rule was very vague, it's very ambiguous in how it's worded. And so this may be an opportunity to the council to consider updates to that rule, if you guys would like to put the structures on how, when, who can use stationery, things like that. So that's certainly something the council may want to consider. We can always invent council rules to accommodate something like that. So yes, it is true, as the mayor pointed out, that I did not know, at least until this point, that the list of recipients had been compiled in a certain way. However, whether that has any legal relevance or an illegal bearing is something that is far outside of my purview as a city attorney, far out above my pay grade. All I will say is the same thing I would say to anyone in election season, when, you know, sharp all those can be run, which is the fact that if anyone believes that something improper has happened election-related, the appropriate remedy is filed with the Florida Elections Commission. That is the body that is responsible for investigating. And yet, the city manager and I, if you're going to go with us, would like to be as far removed of anything political or campaign as possible.
With that said, this is before you provided this information. I mean, this is what was going on. You had, Martin, you can't be involved in the election area. Or Mr. Star? You obviously have no idea where this list came from. You haven't seen the list of what I have to offer.
I'm just correct, I have not seen the list. If I, if I was presented, and I'll take a sterile approach as well, should have looked at this specific example, but if I had been presented with this information by any candidate and asking to compile something for a list that is representative of either party, I would have sent them.
Star?
I'm probably a little lower hanging fruit on, I was asked to respond to a particular problem in the community that I had probably been pretty well versed on just because it was a particular item. I reviewed an email just for content to see if it was accurate, but the information I had learned through my work process, other than that, I didn't really have much other knowledge between all the other stuff. Certainly, I'm bound by the same ethical standards that a employer is, and not even take the ethical standards, they want to be involved even without the ethical standards anyway.
So again, on this vote bill, it's NGP ban, is the name of it.
They're residents.
When you go to it and say it's a web-based voter database, outreach tool, the tool provides political parties and advocacy organizations, including Democratic campaigns, comprehensive voter data, and engagement. Click on each one of those names, this is.
When we run, just like, well, anyone up here, when, when I ran in 2020, 2019, you get that voter database. You enter it in.
You know, I said in your official capacity, it's the council.
I, I get it, because they're my residents, and they're residents who care, and so I can target them.
Why didn't you target them? Why didn't you send to anybody that's on the list? And why, why are 138 of these people female voters of the sort age?
I choose to engage with who I choose to engage with, you know, in, in the city. That's, that's my business. As a representative, I can write letters to whomever.
But you can't, you see the resources.
It did, it did not mention my campaign, it did say nothing. It said, what we are planning to do down there, because that's where they live.
It's just, I've never seen any, I've been involved with almost thirty, I've never seen any, but it's just, especially if you've got a new manager, you can't do this.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong.
So I had my own personal experience, I started getting calls, and at first I thought it was, at first I thought it was oversight, and I will admit, I actually did do that, I actually used, you never heard of me, a city council letterhead thinking it was only mine, but it was addressed to one person and it was internally. And once this came to my attention, I realized that it could have been perceived wrong, and so I corrected that mistake. And so at first I thought, oh, it's okay, I know I wasn't aware, my name's on the letter, but it's okay, it's just a couple of concerns for the residents, that's fine. And then the information started coming more and more, and I thought, wow, that's, that's a lot of people to mail out something on our letterhead with my name on it, and I wasn't even aware of it. So when I got the list, and I saw that it was, except for three or four that had gender neutral names, they were all female, and then when I saw that they had hyperlink, and I clicked on, and I saw that it was DNC, to me, that's their line, because a candidate targets who they want to message. A city council member deals with everyone. And so that flag does not only happen to the women on North Beach, it doesn't happen to any specific party. So as a council member, we are responsible for everyone, not just female Democrats who live on Beach. And to me, that was the clear line that I think we need to address, and if that means we need to change the rules, or, you know, protocols, whatever, I think we need to do that, because we all need to behave or within, or color the lock within the lines the same way. Because my understanding when I got elected was the letterhead has to be informed consent from the council, because you can't speak for everyone. Because, you know, again, as a council member, I think the concerns of your citizens that care, well, all the citizens are your citizens, not just a specific one. And that to me was the line that was crossed that I thought was.
These are a number of people that have communicated with me over the last four years, and I'll give you another example.
I understand that, but what you're saying is, your letter was, I care, I'm going to do something about it, but only for female?
No, it's I care.
Then why didn't you address it to everyone?
This is what, this, I chose to do the ones that I had, that I've communicated with. And I, I didn't say I'm solving it, I just wanted to inform them of what the city was doing. We each got over 100 letters from Dan Zylott, paper letters with a stamp on them. I wrote to each one of those people on my personal City Council Member Letterhead.
I'm not questioning the amount of time it worked.
It's the same.
I'm questioning the ulterior motives to this.
It's not an ulterior motive.
Yeah, it is. It was, it was transparent. If you, if this was a faction of a councilwoman, you would be, you would be addressing all of their concerns regardless of their gender, their age, and their party affiliation. That's your responsibility as a council member, not just to present or address those who are white-minded.
Well, I've walked all those streets.
So why?
I mean, I'm out there talking in other ways.
I don't want to have a possible.
If people want to file a complaint, they're free to file a complaint. We each have our own letterheads that we can speak for ourselves, to our constituents, when they write us or communicate with us, or I know that certain people that signed a petition about Drew Street, I can write them. I have, I have that freedom to do that. That's part of my job as a council member, to, to communicate with our residents.
But you say our residents have been just targeted only a small section, and you represent everyone.
I do represent everyone.
So that everyone is.
But I didn't, but I didn't email, I didn't write every single person that abuts Drew Street. I, I chose not to do that. I mean, I can narrow it down a little bit.
You should have written to everybody who was experiencing the flooding. You're disregarding all those who are not like-minded, who have the same issue.
That's not true.
That's my opinion. And I'm willing to have an open conversation on how to proceed, so that we can all, you know, conduct ourselves in a way that we all agree with, because I don't want to be put in this position again where I'm constantly feeling home calls and trying to understand what happened, and there's, there were constituents that were upset, that said, well, why did she get it and I didn't? Does this represent you or not? Does your name's on it? I, I, I don't think that's fair to me, to feel.
I'm sorry I feel that way. I'll tell you, I've had a number of email responses that I can share that have said, thank you for the letter, I like to be informed. So I'm, you know.
You have a lot more to say, our reinforced outdoor synthesis of improvements.
You, you know, I.
From Florida. Yeah. The program that you're talking about, the Democratic Party program, I used that last time. This time with the people I'm working with, I'm using the Republican version of that. And what it does is, you put an address, and it tells you if the folks at that address are voters, but it tells you if they're Democrat, Republican, Independent. I talk to everybody. The nice thing for me is Democrat, Republican, Independent, waiting party, everyone hates psychology. So, so from that list of people that we talk to, there are some people who are going to, you're going to have more connection with than others. I don't think this was something that was sent down by the Democratic Party. You must contact these people and no one else. I think it's probably people that she has talked to that have been affecting me. And like I, you know, I cannot believe those 139 homes all talk to you. And this came, and these lists are targeted voters, and that's what this law says, it's a targeted voter, that's what they are. They're telling you who are the predictive voters. They don't, and I'm not saying these people are all Democrats, because I don't know that they were, but I was told, and they're investigating us, that they were women of a certain age, and they're only, only, and what man got this? It's definitely closely, I don't, I don't know how you.
Sorry if it looks that way. I keep, I keep fine data about everyone that I interact with for four, four-plus years. And so however I, you know, narrowed that communication with those constituents is similar to what I did with Dan Zylott or Drew Street or others.
I saw the Dan Zylott responses, and I saw the 20 that went out in May, they did not have a hyperlink like this, so it's clearly didn't have comfortable, didn't have comfortable political just like this inherent. So here's what I'd like, yes, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just going to add to this, because to me, the problem, the political problem, the political side of it is the problem, but what I'm concerned with is the problem that's hit North Clearwater Beach that needs to be fixed. And I've been, and I haven't written any letters on it, but I, I've kind of been representing all the people out there, from the Clearwater Beach Association, the Carnival HOA, and the Carnival Yacht Club. I've been to several meetings with them, also, of course, talked to the city, and we're trying to get together with the city to develop a master plan, finally fix this, which is going to be millions of dollars and several, probably five to seven years to fix it. Everybody, I think I'm probably the best one to represent, at least to bring it into council, to the city, because I have an organ on, I've got property out there, and I'm one of the people that experienced flooding. You know, so I think probably we're going to talk about this next council meeting, not the one coming up, but we're going to have a presentation on that, where we can wrap this up and get that message to everyone on the beach, because it affects everybody's property values out there. And why does it affect, affect their property values? Because of the insurance regulations. And, you know, we, Clearwater Beach pays a lot of taxes to our city, or, you know, the majority of taxes get paid by island space in Clearwater Beach, and to have a part of the beach that really needs help, where every time we rain or have a high tide, and it's not flooding the house out, if we don't do something about it, those houses are not going to be able to get insurance, and those people are not going to be able to sell their houses to someone that needs to get financed. They can sell them to somebody that's got cash in hand, but just value, property values will go down, and that'll, that'll affect our budget. So there's, there's a lot to unpack on that, and I think we're going to, we're going to talk about that more toward the end of the month at the council meeting. And what I want to do is get everybody on the beach notified of this issue, so we don't have anybody saying, well, it doesn't really affect me. It affects, it affects everybody out there, so.
That's a good point, so what I would like done is a letter prepared from me on behalf of the Clearwater City Council to go to all the residential homes on Clearwater Beach, tell them where we are, explain the issue, we're claiming to do that, like that done. That's the way I, I think this should, should have gone from the mayor on behalf of the council. It's my opinion. Mr. Marcus. Yes, sir.
I, I think if we're going to be doing that from the, from the city council, saying that the city is now aware of the issues, that we're, we're putting together a master plan for a long-term fix, but they're also concerned with what the short-term fix is going to be. And I think Dan and, and the city manager laid that out pretty well with Marcus at the city meeting, but that's really what's on everybody's mind. Okay, so you're going to fix it, it's going to take five years, what are you doing tomorrow? You know, that would be a letter.
Well, and if you're going to send out the letter, that you're going to sign on behalf of the entire council, I would, as David Wade, and he likes some address of short-term, I think we should all approve of it before it's sent out on behalf of them. You know, maybe I think there's a little something that's missing. I mean, I don't, I don't think about hyper editing it.
I'm not taking any prime officer, I mean, maybe the opportunity to do that with your letter.
But you didn't sign your name to it, it was just me.
So the rest of the city.
But, but we each have our own letterhead, we each have our own.
That's an issue going forward, I don't think that should be anymore. I think what we need to do, Mr. Marcus, is have an in-depth discussion, have it antiquated, council rules that you explained to me, re-antiquated, get them up to speed, what's the gold standard for other people, what they do, how letters go out, what we can or cannot do during the season, get it, finalize soon, I'd like that done before I am done with all of this. It's a discussion.
I'd like to go with this situation, everyone understands how to proceed, I agree.
I don't know why, I don't know why people have to have individual letterhead with the rest of the council. It's when individual letterhead should be coming, that individual and not the rest of the council.
Is that possible?
And I'm not even sure there should be individual letterhead, I don't know. They never had that before, that's the first time ever since I've been appointed back on to the mayor, and I've seen that. We never had that before, this is one letterhead. And any given letterhead has to be scrutinized and approved.
But if it's, but if it's a council letterhead that a mayor signs, and, and if everyone's name is at the bottom, then I think everyone should have, you know, the right to review a letter before it's signed. And that's why I think we each have our own, that we can send out our own letterhead. You know, what if, what if the majority of the council didn't want to inform people who lived out in Drew Street about meetings where we're going to talk about 60 percent design or something?
Okay, I, I, we always want, we're above the other needs, and we need to get an opportunity to approve your letter, and your name was on it, and our name should be on the bottom. What's the difference if the mayor signs it and the mayor's on the bottom? I see no difference.
Well, I want to make sure I know what's in it.
Well, we're going to ask you to, and we know the list was given, and why was it all given?
I mean, some of the, some of the options we could have is, you know, only the mayor can use a city council letter, clean, we know, and raw, where what's being said, you know, or we could just seize all letterheads used by incumbents during campaigns, that could avoid this mess. You know, do what I just did, I didn't use the council, but I wrote my title again, council member leadership of Clearwater. My title is still there, but I don't want to step on anyone's toes and misrepresent and speak out of term, because we are one body, and I have to be very cognizant of that, and so I want to avoid this mess, and so I would like to have an in-depth conversation. Another one is, you know, no letter should be sent out without a legal requirement, you know. you know? Um, this is a mess and I, I don't want everyone to do this again and I think we need to figure this out.
And I certainly didn't want to have to sit here talking, but I have to as my job as the chair of the council. And as soon as we're all bringing back something that is encompassing, encompassing and it is, up to speed.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to bring back something. Keep in mind that there's clearly there are different perspectives among the council classes of what should be in it. And so what would be your preference as far as the content of?
Bring us back to Tampa and what's, what is.
Social options?
Maybe I bring back some options and that might be a kind of.
And I think options with the understanding that we are here, each representing everyone in the city, 117,000 people.
And that's the basis of why.
Okay, but also that we are here and we're out in the community in different ways, different times, with different people, and that we really are the voice and representation of the people and we communicate with them. And I communicate with them via email or phone calls or letters. And so.
I think, I think the whole issue here is this, and I, I kind of agree with Brian. I never had stationery until, it was like a year and a half ago, we, we got a stationery and I'm like, with our name on it, but that was never done before. And I tell you, I only sent out probably a couple of letters for people that have won their election and I've written something, congratulations, that kind of thing. But I've never even used it because it's an awkward thing to have city Clearwaters at the top and then me writing a letter to somebody that doesn't reflect all of our wishes. So I just don't do it. If I'm going to write a letter to somebody, I'll do it on my stationery, like Lena said, and then just sign it. Dave Albright and council member city of Clearwater, but then have the city logo on it. That, that's the part that, that I think is the stinker here. So I think, I think we probably should turn our stationery in and make kind of formal letter, but as a city seal on it should come from the mayor.
But if you sign it, council member, um, then you need to PDF that, you need to share that with, with Tammy, right? That needs to be filed.
Yes, exactly.
And so all those cards that you're writing on your own personal stationery.
No, I don't have cards, I said I sent two in my fire pot and, uh, and I didn't copy when I sent them to Tammy, they were a couple of years ago. So I keep that in my desk. I've never even used it because it's just awkward for me to be writing somebody with a city seal on it.
Because for example, like Sheila Sullivan, who served on her EAP for a while and then she moved to St. Pete and I wrote her, I, thanks, I, you know, I liked what she did on the EAP, it's important, and signed it Kathleen Beckman, Clearwater, council member, not the council. So, so those kinds of things are.
Not a problem. Any other discussion, I just, I just still, I have a hard time harassing people. Put a claim line around 139 letters and click on, and it takes a minute to get somewhere and the people who need to actually walk the block, they were all soft pieces.
Over six years.
Over six years. I just, I just, I don't believe. So see you.